Being.
We all know.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah. Yeah. Good. I miss those games.
Yeah. I understand.
Thank you for being here. If you'll stand, we'll be led in a word of prayer by David Barber and remain standing for our claim.
That's great. Heavenly Father, thank you for the day today. Our many blessings. Father, just thank you for the opportunity to get here to be a part of this meeting this morning. I ask you to be with these commissioners as they make important decisions in New Defense and County. Thank you for everyone in attendance and the families that are represented here today. Father, just ask you to watch over us as we enter this meeting this morning is to travel to our next destinations. Just keep us safe, watch over us. They ask if you watch over us and their own responsibilities each and every day. Forgive us of our sins and all this, pray in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with never end and justice for all. Honor to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to Dean Texas. One state under God, one indivisible.
Yeah. I call to order the regular session of Van Zant County Commissioners Court on Wednesday, August the seventeenth, twenty twenty-two at nine oh one A M. Announced quorum is established with all members of the court press. Item number two, discuss and consider dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the meetings of the Commissioners Court and approval same for July the fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, August the third, twenty twenty-two, and August the ninth, twenty twenty-two. Got a motion by Commissioner West. Is there a second to approve the minutes? Got a second by Commissioner Pearson. Is there any questions, discussion, or corrections to the minutes? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number three, discuss and consider approval of county bills for payment as submitted. So move. Got a motion by Commissioner Milton. Second by Commissioner LaPrada. Any questions or discussion about bills that's been submitted for payment? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number four, discuss and consider ratifying of county bills as submitted. Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Second by Commissioner West. Is there any questions or discussion about any of the bills that's submitted for ratifying? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number five, general business. Is there any general business we need to be made aware of? Any announcements or anything? Anyone have any announcements or anything? I can't find me. Okay, Andy.
Mayor. Uh, Andy Mayor made an announcement. She got a call from Bob Hall.
Okay. I know that's been in. There's been a battle, ain't it? They've been working on that for a long time. Okay. Anything else? Any other general business? Being none, we'll move to item number six, public comments. Scott, did anyone sign up for any? No one signed up for any public comments? Got to move us to item number seven. Public hearing on proposed budget. At the end of the public hearing, there'll be a vote to reject, accept, modify per local government code uh, one 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 point zero zero seven. The, uh, so at this time, at nine oh four A M, we will open up the public hearing on the proposed budget. The twenty twenty-two budget. Uh, just cover a few things. Uh, this budget will raise more total. Uh, well, let me stop. The public hearing on the matter of the proposed budget for fiscal year ending September the thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. The Commissioners Court will consider the proposed budget on that date, which is today at this moment. And at the conclusion of the public hearing, take action to accept, reject, or modify the proposed budget. This budget will raise more total property taxes than last budget by eight hundred and seventy-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars, or four point three four percent. And of that amount, six hundred and seventy-eight thousand and eighty-eight dollars is the tax property revenue to be raised from new property added to the tax roll this year. Also, the amount of frozen property tax are increased by a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine. You'll hear a lot about the three and a half percent. That eight hundred and seventy-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars, you have to subtract the new property from that figure, which puts you under the three and a half percent. Give you some highlights. The fiscal year twenty twenty-two proposed tax rate at point four four two six nine three eight zero. That is lowered by fifteen point four three percent from last year's twenty twenty-one proposed tax rate, which was fifty-two, was point fifty-two, three, four, seven, one, seven, four. So we did lower the tax rate. Uh, we've been doing that the last several years. Uh, the general public does not recognize it because the appraisals are going up so high. But we are continuing to lower the tax rate, lowered it by fifteen point four three percent. Van Zant. Uh, Van Zant County is reducing the tax rate considerably due to the approximate twenty-four percent rise in total market value. That's the appraisals. Uh, which was nine nine million, one hundred ninety-nine thousand, no, nine billion, nine billion, one hundred and ninety-nine thousand, million, three hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and ten dollars. Uh, while Van Zant County has reduced the property tax rate, the amount of property taxes collected will increase eight hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars, eight hundred and seventy-one, four hundred and eighty-two dollars. As we said, six hundred and seventy-eight thousand and eighty-eight dollars is due to new property uh, taxable value in the amount of a hundred and fifty-seven million, one hundred and seventy-three thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars. And the reminder of a hundred and ninety-three thousand, three hundred and ninety-four due to a rise in the value of the property, which is determined by the Van Zant County Appraisal District. New election equipment is also included in this proposed budget. The county has the option of lowering the fund balance and purchasing the equipment, set up scheduled payments, or if the American Rescue Plan funds are available, use those funds as an eligible expense. Uh, salary adjustments for employees were budgeted as followed. Every elected official uh, and employee of Van Zant County received three thousand dollar salary increase. Dispatcher, dispatchers received uh, four thousand per year. And all law enforcement, including sheriff and correctional officers, five thousand per year. This increase is necessary to address a statewide issue of low applications and to become more competitive in salary with surrounding counties. New positions. There was a septic inspector due to the high number of subdivisions being created in Van Zant County. All the y'all here, all the subdivisions coming in. Uh, we needed to create another position for the uh, septic inspector. Uh, also moved a part-time position from district clerk uh, employee to full-time. So we'll move. There was one position created and then moved one part-time to full-time in district clerk's office. Medical insurance for all employees increased six point five zero percent from seven hundred and twenty-three dollars and thirty cents per month per employee to seven hundred and seventy dollars and thirty cents per month per employee. So the, that's a benefit that the employees uh, get that the county pays one hundred percent of their insurance. But it did increase six point five zero. Uh, they did. This budget does increase uh, travel uh, mileage. Uh, if you get mileage, we increased it seventeen percent. Uh, postage, eight percent due to the postage increase. And electricity were also addressed. Uh, let the electricity going up. That's pretty, pretty well just an overview of our budget. Does the Commissioners have anything to add to that before we open it up to the public? Okay. Being none, uh, we will open it up to the public. It is a public hearing to hear from any, any concerns, praises, or anything about the Van Zant County proposed budget. Is there anyone that would like to speak on the budget? Okay. I think it's good budget as most, everyone knows Van Zant County is out of debt uh, with about a million-dollar reserve fund. Uh, Van Zant County is, is financially sound. But we'll make another call for any public. If anyone would like to speak on the proposed budget. I mean, we work hard. I would like to thank the Commissioners. You know, you come in, you think it's easy. Keith will tell you. And Andy's in the same position is and, and Chad. Chad and Keith will tell you, they came in before, once they were elected and they were coming in. They sat out there and both of them will tell you today, when you're on this side, there's nothing out there that can prepare you for this. And so it's a quite an experience to go through. Uh, but I think, I think we've done a good job. I'll make my third and final call for any public member that would like to address the uh, budget. It is your hearing. We're here to listen.
It was a lot of hard work, a lot of time put in. It's not something that flies by real fast. Lots of thought goes into it.
It is. You make tough decisions. Last call for anyone that would like to speak on the proposed budget. Okay. No speakers. I will close the public hearing on the proposed budget uh, at nine thirteen A M. Okay, that concludes the public hearing. We'll need to take a record vote on the proposed budget. The vote is to reject, accept, or modify. I would entertain a motion. To accept is okay. Got a motion by Commissioner Milton to accept this budget. Got a second by Commissioner West. Is there any questions or discussion? Being none, we will take a record vote. Uh, Commissioner LaPrada. Did you say, you, you accept? Commissioner Milton. Mr. Uh, Pearson, except. Commissioner West. Okay. It was unanimous by all Commissioners to accept this budget. Again, I thank you, gentlemen, for your work. It's not a one show. It takes all of us. And thank you for, for your work. Sandy, is there anything else we need on any of that? I should hope that you speak. I did ask Sandy. I said, would you, would you like to speak? No, you go ahead. Item number eight, discuss and consider setting salaries for Van Zant County elected officials per local government code one five two point zero one three C. Setting elected officials, you have the list before you. As I said, uh, all the elected officials uh, received a three thousand dollar increase over last year's uh, salary with the exception of the sheriff. And he will receive five thousand. Uh, as y'all know, it's, it's getting harder and harder to find anyone that wants to work in law enforcement. Uh, we, we Joe stepped out, but I had a, a conversation with Melanie last night and Joe uh, of our situation at the, the jail in the Sheriff's Department. I mean, it's, it's, it's critical. Uh, we're doing the best we can. Uh, but that is, and we hated to give, and Joe didn't ask for the right. Joe, Joe, Joe's not there for the much. But if you go raise all the others, you don't want to make it more than the sheriff. So that's the reason he is as at five thousand. That's explanation up there. You have that. Is there, is there a motion to, to uh, approve uh, setting the salaries and approving those as the salaries of Van Zant County elected officials?
Don't move as friends.
Okay, got, got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner LaPrada to approve setting the salaries of Van Zant County elected officials. Any questions or discussion? I might, I might add that as we set this, this morning, uh, the auditor's office will notify each and every, every elected official today of what their salary is set at. And then they have five days, I believe, five o'clock Monday uh, evening, that twenty-second. I believe. They have five days to grieve their salary. If they don't agree, agree to that, uh, we look forward to that every year. And um, so they will be notified. She also won't y'all sit in the chair. She won't notify y'all while we're still all, and knock this group out together. And uh, have a motion, a second. Any other discussion or questions, comments?
Lots of time put in on this too.
It was.
Uh, on all the raises countywide. I think that I, I've never seen the court be as fair as they, as they were this year uh, to elected officials and employees.
And might, might explain that what we did this year, and there was a con- concern, when you give a percentage raise and you've got all different salaries, the ones at the lower end get a less raise than the ones at the higher. When you give a percentage across the board, well, then the ones that's making more get a bigger raise. The ones at the lower end. And this year, we tried to, we tried to draw that together. We didn't give a percentage raise. We give a three thousand dollar raise. And that way, if you do it by percentage, the lower employees, the lower rated employees and elected officials received a higher percentage raise than the upper, the higher. That might seem simple, but that's what we tried to do. I thought it was very effective. I think it's a good, good move because if not, the gap just keeps continuing to get wider and wider. And we tried to close that gap. Well, the motion is second. Any other questions, discussion, or comments? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. And Sandy, that don't need to be a record vote. Item number nine, discuss and consider uh, West Boundary Line Survey to be completed regarding Van Zant County Sheriff's Office. Commissioner Fred, you, Commissioner Fred, you wanted to address the court on that?
Oh, yes, sir. Originally, you know, we're gonna build the tower out there and put it on the west side of that building. And so we was taking measurements about putting it there. We was able to come back and find a copy of the original blueprint. So we know exactly where that mine is now. So I don't believe it's gonna be necessary to see.
Okay, no act. We're not going to need any action on item number nine. Okay. No action on item number nine. We'll move to item number ten. Discuss and consider payment for lodging for the twenty twenty-two L three Harris Wireless Users Group Conference in Oklahoma City, Oklahoma uh, from ARPA funds.
Yes, sir. We signed that contract with L three Harris and they've got a Harris Users Conference coming up in Oklahoma City where they do a lot of training about the system. And we feel like it'd be good to send three people up there before we go to getting in our design review meetings to go through this class. So we got a better understanding of what we're talking about when we get to that stage. It'd be me, I T Director, Mr. Slaton, and Joe Maddox from Sheriff's Office. And we got the Harris through in the flat, the conference expense for free. We still gotta cover travel, lodging, meals. And so since this is not related to streets or the point out of my road bridge budget or point out of the Sheriff's Department budget, we'd have to go ahead and use some of the ARPA funding for that.
Is that an expense that is approved by ARPA? Bill, but William Bass.
I do believe we have an email from Mr. Bass saying he's here.
I'd like to see if you the ARPA funds, if you can, hold that interest because you never know. I mean, they may not approve it under ARPA and we have to go back to interest. Okay. And as I was going through this agenda yesterday, it, it says payment for lodging. What about travel? You mentioned travel. This just covers what, what's your, what's your motion?
My motion is to cover lodging, travel, and meals out of the ARPA funds from the three going to the.
Okay. That's motion. Is there a second?
Well, I don't mind seconding it, but I don't know if it's legal for us to vote on something that's not on the agenda. That's my issue. It, it says lodging. I, I won't be open to our agendas.
Yeah, you amended it.
We, we didn't amend the agenda.
You mean the, the line up. We've done that before. But I, I don't care whatever you did.
I'm for it.
Yeah, I mean, we got a motion. Is there a second?
He said.
No. He said, did you?
No, I'm not saying.
I didn't think you did. I don't have a second.
We're going to just cover lodging then we'll come back later and cover.
Where do you have time to bring it back? The whole night.
Well, he can, he can do it.
Okay. Okay. Have motion died for lack of second.
Well, I can nothing was just to cover lodging.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, got a motion uh, to, to cover the lodging for the L three Harris, the twenty twenty-two L three Harris Wireless Users Group Conference in Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. Uh, that motion is for lodging. And you've got a, we got a second. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
And we have time for twenty fifth.
Item number eleven, discuss and, and approve Van Zant County Emergency Service District. Number two, annual financial report for the year ending September the thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Is there anyone here representing number two E S D? Being none, you have the report before you. It's a good report. Got a motion by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner LaPrada to approve the Van Zant County Emergency Service District uh, number two annual financial report. Any questions or discussion?
That is South Van Zant. No, that's. I mean, Grant Selain. Yeah, South Van Zant's number three.
Yeah, we grant you in there. Any other questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number twelve, discuss and consider acceptance of a check from city of Edgewood in the amount of three thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars and eight cents per place of W S uh, Front Street in Precinct One.
Yes, sir. That was some work out down there under the interlocal green land in the city of Edgewood. Now, if the check presented for that, and I'm just asking the court to accept it.
Thanks. Got a motion by Commissioner Milton. There a second? Second by Commissioner LaPrada. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number thirteen, discuss and consider and accept correction of donation by city of Fruitvale in the amount of twelve thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twelve cents for Van Zant County Road nineteen eighteen, Van Zant County Road eleven twenty-nine and patch material for city streets and acceptance of a donation for Van Zant County Road nineteen oh one in the amount of seventeen thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars and twenty-six cents. Uh, Mr. Commissioner LaPrada, would you like to address the court?
Yes, sir. That's. Yes, sir, that's, that's my, and I remember last meeting, we had accepted a donation for fruit over twelve thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and twelve cents. And I put it down for Van Zet County Road nineteen oh one, well, that was a error. It was actually for Van Zet County Road nineteen eighteen, County Road eleven twenty nine, and a little patch material in city street. So I needed to correct that in, in the record, just so we got proper documentation. So I want to do that with this motion, and also the actual work on nineteen oh one was for seventeen thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars and point six cents. So I'll make a motion to effect and make the correction and accept the ne- this new donation check of seventeen thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars and twenty six cents for Van Zet County Road nineteen oh one.
Okay, so you did receive a check from Fruitvale in the amount of twelve thousand, two hundred and seventy nine dollars and twelve cents?
Yes, sir, that was one we had on the last regular meeting agenda that we approved it, so I just put the wrong job project on it, so I want to correct that project name number. And then the check today for seventeen thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars and point six cents will go to project, really, County Road nineteen oh one.
Okay. That's his motion to make the correction on the check that was received from Fruitvale. To correct the road and then to approve this donation for not Van Zet County Road nineteen oh one in the amount of seventeen thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars and twenty six cents. Got a second by Commissioner Pearson, any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
I'd also like to state on that, the funds from these two projects we just approved will go back into my materials budget and go into county roads.
Item number fourteen, discuss and consider replat approval for midpoint ranchette estates located on Van Zet County Road twenty six, twenty four, and precinct two.
Yes, sir, this is a midpoint ranchette estates, the, uh, the replat has been done in compliance with Van Zet County subdivision rules and regulations. And, uh, I made the motion that we accept it.
Okay, that's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West, any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number fifteen, discuss and consider plaid approval for Eastview Hills located on Van Zet County Road twenty four, ten, and precinct two.
Yeah, this is another, uh, subdivision that's going in, small subdivision, and a four, four lot subdivision. And, uh, the developer has complied with the subdivision rules and regulations of Van Zet County. So I'm making, most we accept this for filing.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Milton, is there a second? Second by Commissioner West. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number sixteen, discuss and consider approval of fiscal year twenty twenty two budget amendments. You have the budget amendments before you. Is there a motion to approve? Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, is there a second? Got a second by Commissioner LaPrad. Any questions or discussion on the budget amendments? Being none, all in favor of approving, say aye. Those, those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number seventeen, discuss and consider monthly reports submitted by various offices and departments of county government and approval of entry of same in the court's minutes as matter of record. Mr. West, you have any comment?
I do, uh, this is an unusual month, we have three presentations meeting, but maybe somebody didn't pick up on it. It's gonna happen the last day of the month. Uh, so we've gotten in all the reports, F P M S and theirs comes in at the end of the month automatically, it just comes to us, so. But everything else is already in.
Is that a motion to approve the reports? Okay, is there a second? Second, second by Commissioner Milton. Any questions or discussion on the reports that's been submitted for approval? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those are, those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number eighteen, discuss and consider retaining Flyers Davis P L L C to represent Van Zet County in the following lit- litigation, uh, Skill Zone USA LLC versus Van Zet County, Texas. Cause number two, two dash zero, 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 eight, eight, pending in the two hundred and ninety fourth District Court of Van Zet, uh, Judicial District Court of Van Zet County. Is there a motion to retain Flyers and Davis? Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson. There a second, second by Commissioner Milton. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. At this time, I would like to jump from eighteen to item number twenty one. Which would, would have been a closed executive session in compliance with section five, five, one point zero, seven, four of the Texas Government Code. We will not need that on the agenda, we will not be covering that, uh, so you can strike that off the agenda. We will move back up to item number eighteen, closed executive session in compliance with section five, five, one point zero, seven, one of the Texas Government Code to seek advice of its attorney regarding pending and, and. What, what's the word? Pending litigation and const- consultation with its attorney regarding matters protected by the attorney client privilege. Uh, at this time, we will enter into an enclosed executive session at nine thirty five. PM, we will reconvene after the closed, we, we, we go ahead. Item number twenty also will be covered in the executive session in compliance with section five, five, one point zero, seven, two of the Texas Government Code to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. Though, both those items will be covered in the executive session. We will, we will reconvene to open session to, uh, address any action that needs to be taken resulting from the closed executive session. So this, at this time, I'd asked all recorders be turned off.